Okay, thank you everyone. I think we're gonna go ahead and get started. Ken, have the roll.
Greg Strick.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Aaron O'Quinn.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Jim Winchester.
Here.
Scott Polis.
Here.
Jeff Ron.
Here.
Andre Spinelli is excused. You have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, I know we have a resolution that's being considered here. Is there a motion to add this to the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I move to amend the agenda and add Resolution 2021-035 as consent agenda item D1A.
Okay, it looks like that motion was seconded by Commissioner O'Quinn. Any objections to the motion? Okay, hearing none. The agenda has been amended. We'll go ahead to disclosures. Commissioner Polis?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Winchester?
No disclosures.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Strick?
Yes, in the matter of the Resolution 2021-035, I was not present, so for I would abstain for all action on that resolution.
Commissioner Krishna?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Ron?
No disclosures.
And no disclosures for myself. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Ron, and seconded by Commissioner Polis. Is anyone wishing to pull an item from the consent agenda for discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to pull item D1A, Resolution 2021-035, from the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you Commissioner Ron. With that resolution pulled, there are no remaining items on the consent agenda for action. Commissioner Ron, is there anything where anyone else would like to do with the pulled resolution?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to rescind the motion adopted at the November 1st, 2021 meeting, to approve in case 2021-0120 text amendments to AMC Title 21, Section 2105-050 Improvements, and Section 2108-060 subdivision agreements to clarify soil contamination cleanup requirements, subject to Department recommendations Sections 1 and 2, as worded in the staff packet on page 2. Again, it's a move to rescind.
Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner O'Quinn. This is a motion to rescind the motion adopted at the November 1st, 2021 meeting to approve Case 2021-0120. Would any commissioner like to comment on the motion? Any discussion?
Just briefly, Mr. Chair, to recap, as discussed previously with staff, the intention of this rescission is procedural, in that we heard the case for our, the plotting board doing so. Plotting Board has now heard the case, and so with this rescission, it will come back to PZC at a future meeting for us to hear again. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yeah, that motion to rescind is approved. Okay, next item on the agenda is our public hearings. Before we start, I will read the procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meetings. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, et cetera, will receive five minutes. Individuals will receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual who may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, accept commission recommendations to the assembly which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. With that, the first case for public hearing on the agenda is Case 2021-0122. Staff, would you like to provide a report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Page 12 of your packets has a site plan for this case, page 12. This is a request for a conditional use permit to allow a recreational or vacation camp in the Chuyac Eagle River Alpine Slope District. The petitioner is seeking to have six cabins, a gathering house, and a hospitality house on five acres of land at mile 7.2 of a Klutina Road. The site will provide short-term accommodations and recreational facilities for tourists, local residents, and small groups. The property is currently undeveloped. The department finds that all nine approval criteria for a conditional use permit are met, and is therefore recommending approval of this application, this conditional use, subject to conditions of approval 1 through 4 on page 5 of your packet. The first two conditions are standard conditions of approval. The third one, the state fire marshal asked for a permit approval review, and also the traffic department asked for the site plan to show paving within the portion of the driveway that is located within the Klutina Lake Road right-of-way. And that is all. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Okay, is there a representative from the petitioner?
Hello, my name is Teal Skyheller, and I am, together with my husband, the owner of Blue Water Base Camp. Thank you for hearing our petition, and thank you, staff, for your report. We are happy to concur with the staff. We would also like you to approve the conditional use application. Most of the information on our property is in the packet. I'll just highlight a couple things. Our mission is to create a welcoming, luxurious spaces for people to experience the adventure of Alaska in the municipality of Anchorage, despite their physical abilities. And so, a casual way of saying that is that we create experiences for the slightly out of shape and a wee bit lazy folks, like perhaps you and definitely me, who still want to live their Alaskan dream. So the project is five acres, cabins, a gathering house for small events, and a VIP, a VIP house for special groups. Combined, they make a unique rental experience for both locals and visitors. So, community is part of our ethos. We look forward to contributing to our local community. I'm a lifelong Alaskan. My husband's been here almost as long as I have. And together, we look forward to partnering with other adventure companies, such as the bike and kayak rental place. We're not looking to replace what's already working well in our community. But there is a big gap. There is no rental facilities for small group gatherings or places to relax and get away within the municipality of Anchorage that enables our residents and our visitors to get into nature without leaving our city. So, even though Klutina is just on the edge of Anchorage, it is still part of Anchorage, and we look forward to bringing something unique to the municipality, and that kind of keeps more of the visitors here locally. So, are there any questions from any of you?
Commissioner Strick?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, some of us probably could use a camp like this at times as well. Just for clarification, I'm sure it's probably here in the packet too, but more of a question possibly to the staff. Is there a limit on the number of nights that a party can use this type facility, under this conditional use?
Through the chair, let me check. I know that camper parks, there is a 30-day limit.
Let's see here. And the carryover question to that is, does this type of facility fall under the Anchorage bed tax?
Can I answer those?
Sure.
Okay. Yes, it does fall under the Anchorage bed tax, so we will be charging that. And there is an average 30-day maximum stay. So, our average stays cannot exceed 30 days.
That's a, average could be, you know, you have a bunch at 45 and a bunch, number of them at 5, so...
Ideally, we like them at two or three days.
Ideally, you like them to take it for the whole summer and be done.
No, you know, in general, it is a short-term stay business. We're not looking for long-term rentals. We've, we've done plenty of those, and they're a lot of work.
No, I've done the bike riding across the country and in Europe and so forth, and these types of facilities are targets for areas like yours, what you're trying to do. So, thank you.
Commissioner Ron?
Thank you, through the chair. Ms. Heller, in concept, I would say I think it's a great idea, right? Generally supportive of the efforts, and it looks like, you know, you've engaged with the community and been communicative about what your plans are. My question's around, around parking, and I'm not a traffic or transportation engineer, and I realize that traffic has looked at it. I'm just curious, though, when I look on the site plan on page 12, it looks like all the spaces as defined are only 20 feet long. Understanding there's a wide variety of travelers in Alaska, many of them are moving about in larger vehicles. So just curious as to if that's gone into the planning consideration for the size, quantity, and location of parking on-site.
Yeah, that's a great question. So the 20 feet is what the traffic department told us to make them, so we deferred to their requirement. And yes, there probably will be RV-friendly parking areas, especially over by the larger cabins, the macro cabins in the top-left corner of the site plan. Those are drive-in cabins, and they'll have a little bit more space if, you know, that area. And then there's two other parking areas that, while they say 20 feet, will probably be able to fit RVs, just because we're, we're not having the trees right on the edges of those.
Commissioner Krishna?
Thank you. This might also be a little bit of a question for staff, but we have in our packet here the use determination letter from the planning department, and it looks like there was originally a single-family home included on the plan, and the department determined that that wasn't allowable because it would be a different principal use. Is that correct?
That is correct. There will not be a principal residential home.
Sure. If I might ask a follow-up question, I would like a little bit of clarification from the staff as well about how that decision was made, or any other information you could provide for that.
This is a R10 residential zoning district, and I guess in the R10, you can have only one single principal use, which is the recreational camp or, or a house, but not both. I haven't read that determination recently. When I was sort of scanning it, I don't know, some weeks ago or months ago, it was, it was done a long time ago. Well, it was done very preliminarily, just to make sure that the use... Well, I thought, I took away from it that it was to see what use she fit into her business, but I also saw that single-family home thing, too. I was just gonna look up and see if the caretaker residence is allowed, but yeah, I don't have anything else to add. I don't know.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Looks like you've got full 7 minutes and 55 seconds for rebuttal.
I appreciate your interest in your questions, and forward to hosting you all if it is so approved.
Yeah, I see. Are there any members of the public wishing to testify on this matter? Okay, no one, so you actually now can, now can present your rebuttal if you would like to.
I think I'm good. I just thank you for your time.
Okay, what's the will of the body? A motion by Commissioner Strick.
Yes, in the matter of Case 2021-0122, I would move for approval, subject to the Department recommendations 1 through 4, as provided.
Yeah, that motion is seconded by Commissioner Ron. Mr. Strick, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, I would like to thank the petitioner for bringing this forward. I appreciate that the owner, operator, and so forth is the one doing the presentation. I like it when they're actively involved and right there at front. Nice, good, clean package. It was easy to read, and so thank you for that. I also note that there was no public testimony on this matter that came forth to the body.
Any other commissioners wishing to speak to the motion? Okay, we can call the vote. That motion is approved. Turning to the next matter, Case 2021-0126. Can we get a presentation from staff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll keep it brief, since we did go section by section during the work session. But briefly, I'll just state that over the last several years of implementing current Title 21, the planning department has become aware of several inconsistencies within it that may pose hurdles to development and/or achieving the regulation's intent. The proposed ordinance is intended to remove inconsistencies within Title 21 and to better align regulations with current practices. We do recommend approval, subject to a few amendments. And just to put them on the record, I'll go through those amendments. First one being to Section 8. There's no changes to the language here. It's just simply removing a proposed sentence to the middle of the paragraph. And there was a question that was asked by commissioners to whether or not this would apply to travel trailers and recreational vehicles. And my apologies for not having the answer on hand at that moment. Oftentimes, you kind of get in a flow with these things, and you don't realize that the answer's right in front of you. But this would apply to the private outdoor storage and non-commercial equipment accessory to a residential use, which by definition is the private outdoor storage of non-commercial equipment, including non-commercial trucks, boats, aircraft, off-road vehicles, recreational vehicles, or travel trailers. So, to answer your question, yes, that would, this section would apply to those, those vehicles. For Section 11, again, this, this section did not originate with the planning department, and we have not been provided sufficient justification for it. We do believe that it's necessary to remove this section in its entirety, lacking justification for it. And for Section 13, we do have some minor changes to the language, so that that proposed section would read as such. The title would be "Exception for paving if property is accessed by an unpaved alley or local street." And the section itself would read, "If a property is accessed by an unpaved alley or street with local classification, the owner may construct permitted driveways using crushed rock or other suitable, compactable material in lieu of paving." And for Section 17, that's simply a grammatical, not a grammatical, just a clerical error, where the B2B Central Business District periphery should read as B2C Central Business District periphery. And for Section 20, we've got a number of minor language changes in here, just removing any specificity to the number of copies that need to be provided. We'd like that number to be a little more fluid in the application, so that we don't have to do code changes every single time that that changes. And minor language changes further down specified in the staff report here. For Section 21, this would be a brand-new section that we are recommending, and that is removing the temporary sign, temporary sign removal cash bond fee. And that corresponds to Section 19 that talks about the removal of that language of a temporary sign removal cash bond. We did receive one late comment, and I will just put that on the record. That's supplementary packet number 1 that was provided to the commission this evening. And code does require that any changes to Chapter 8 be heard by the Plating Board prior to Planning and Zoning Commission coming to a final recommendation. So because of that, we recommend that tonight, the Planning and Zoning Commission open the public hearing and close it once all the comments are heard. However, we do advise that Planning and Zoning Commission postpone their decision until December 6th to allow the Plating Board to review this proposed ordinance, and specifically Section 15, and issue their recommendation and provide it to the commission. Doing this will maintain proper process for text amendments to Chapter 8. And it's important to note, too, that the Planning and Zoning Commission will have the opportunity at the December 6th meeting to reopen the public hearing, should they deem it necessary, if there's new evidence or a great desire to solicit new public comments. So, they won't be limited to just the comments that they received this evening, if they would like to open that public hearing back up. So with that, I would be happy to take any questions the commission may have at this time. Thank you.
How do we talk? How do we say we want to talk, if we want to ask a question? There we go. See Commissioner Strick in the queue.
There we go. Question to the staff. Did we get any, did we receive any responses, any feedback from any of the community councils on these changes?
Through the chair, we did receive comments from the university area community council, and those are provided to you this evening. If I can find the page number.
This might be at the very back. Is it page 62?
52, 62.
Mr. Chair, that's correct. Page 62.
Any other questions? And then, will we receive a further presentation, or is that kind of the extent of the, the petitioner's presentation, so to speak, for this?
Through the chair, I mean, I'd be happy to continue speaking.
No, sorry, I didn't mean to imply that there was anything missing in your presentation. I just meant if there was, since, unlike the standard case where there's a petitioner who then speaks, if we just go straight to hearing from the public at this point.
So, Mr. Chair, yeah, you can go straight to the, and open up the public hearing. I'm the only petitioner on this matter.
Okay, thank you for that. So with that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this matter? Okay, you can go ahead and state your name for the record, and then also, if you could say if you're speaking on behalf of yourself as an individual or for an organization.
My name is Peter Briggs. I'm speaking on behalf of the Alaska chapter of the American Society of Landscape Architects.
Okay, you will have five minutes. Go ahead. Thank you.
Through the chair, we support the staff recommendation for removal of the proposed amendment within Section 11. I'll keep this brief, because we did provide a letter. We hope our letter and supporting information provides clear reason for our support for this removal of Section 11, and I am here to answer any questions or provide clarification as beneficial regarding the letter we provided, or general questions we might be able to help with as landscape architects.
Okay, looks like no questions, but thank you for the letter and the information you provided. Good evening. Can you please state your name for the record, and whether you're testifying as an individual? I'm sorry. I think there should be a button on the microphone there to turn it on. Oh, I saw it briefly. It's a quick touch. There we go.
Are we good?
Yep.
All right. My name's Clay Porter. I am, I am an architect and a contractor in this city. Have been building here since 1972. I speak on behalf of myself, as well as the Anchorage Home Builders Association, as I've been a member of that public, that organization for a very long time. This is, my feeling on what's happening here is very positive. The result in this, that I see in this ordinance is the result of a lot of work done by both staff and those of us on the industry side to try and find a method or a way to make things faster, work better, and get more construct, more development done, and to work towards the goals of affordable housing. I have read this, and I'm not gonna go through it section by section, as I think we'd, we'd all hate each other at the end of that. But we feel very positively that this is a, this is a great step forward, and the staff has been very helpful in working us, helping us work through this to have a positive effect with that. That, we're just very much in favor of the omnibus bill.
Okay, thank you for your testimony.
Good evening. My name's Bill Taylor. I'm here on behalf of myself as owner of Colony Builders, and also I'm a board member of the Anchorage Home Builders.
Could you speak a little closer to the microphone? I'm sorry.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I am here on behalf of the Anchorage Home Builders Association as well. I'm a board member. And I want to just express my support for this package of ordinance changes. It's been a long time coming. If you go back in history, you'll note that it took almost eight or nine years to provide the changes for Title 21 from the old Title 21. So the rewrite was a long, drawn-out process, and it was flawed, quite honestly. And I think in the words of Patrick Flynn, he's an ex-assembly member, he said, "We have to accept this Title 21 rewrite as it is, even with all its flaws." And there were a number of flaws in the original rewrite. There was a lot of work that went into it, a lot of effort, but it still had areas that, especially the Home Builders Association felt was, needed some adjustments. So I think this omnibus package kind of reflects a lot of those changes that we've looked for over the years, as we've tried and tried and tried through a couple of different administrations to bring forward and make those necessary changes, because there are some of the provisions in T21 that are an impediment to development. in T-21 that are an impediment to development. And I think we all, as home builders anyway, want to see the, the town grow and prosper and have a healthy home-building industry. So the word that was used previously, more often than not, was, was Title 21 fatigue when they originally finally passed the ordinance, or the rewrite, I should say. And so that fatigue is reflected in the fact that there were some errors made. I think there were some oversights. I think this omnibus package reflects some corrections in those oversights, when Patrick Flynn said, "It's not perfect, but let's pass it. We're exhausted. We need to move on." So I think there's, if you look through this individually, there, it's a big package, but it's very well-thought-out staff. I want to thank you for doing a great job pulling it together. They did all the hard work. We just provided a lot of the input. So in summary, I think this is well-needed. It's timely, and we would appreciate the commission's support on this. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hi, I'm Eric Visser, owner of Visser Construction. I'm also current president for Anchorage Home Builders Association. And I kind of just want to reiterate what Bill said. There has been a lot of work that's gotten put into this omnibus package. Going back, talking about some of the previous regulation that was passed with regards to Title 21, and just to step back a little bit, from a national perspective, if we look at some of the numbers, we get our numbers through National Association of Home Builders. They say that anywhere between 26% and 30% of the cost of the house is due to regulation. They, that's long wait times for permits, that's, you know, red tape, that's all these, you know, little things that require us just to spend a little bit more money to get a home built here in the city. Anchorage is pretty much in line with that from the numbers that we've gotten back from NAHB. And I think this package, you know, while it's not going to move the needle a lot, it definitely is going to take us in steps in the right direction. We all know we're at a pretty, pretty large housing deficit here in Anchorage for a town of 350,000. We really should be building between 1,000 and 1,200 homes a year. Last year, we didn't build more than 125 single-family units. So that just shows you the despair that Anchorage has and how much ground we have to make up. So I definitely want to urge and recommend your guys' approval after it comes back from the Plating Board, just because we need to start building more houses in Anchorage. We have a lot of challenging lots that, you know, it's all infill development, homes that have to get demoed and, you know, built back up, which creates challenges in itself. So a few of these items will definitely help us massage that, you know, allow us the ability to use and have a little more higher, higher-density housing, because that's really the only way we're going to start to make up some of that housing deficit that has been created by some of these regulations that were passed previously. And with that, I'll answer any questions you guys may have.
Okay, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Kimmer. I'll be presenting as an individual. Thanks for your time and consideration. I generally support the, the proposed changes to Title 21, except for Section 11. I'm hoping that you will consider staff's input. And I also have a question. The Alaska Professional Design Council, APDC, submitted a letter supporting the removal of the proposed language for Section 11, or deleting the requirement for landscape architects to stamp and seal planting plans. I don't know if you received it. I didn't see it in this package.
I don't think it made it into the packet, but we did receive a supplement that included that letter. I believe that's what the November 4, 2021 letter is.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, that's correct. Yeah, supplementary packet number one.
Great. The Alaska Professional Design Council is a member organization that includes transportation engineers, interior designers, civil engineers, structural engineers, landscape architects. And they also do not support the suggested removal of landscape architectures, landscape architects being involved in producing planting plans. That's all I had. Any questions?
Okay, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to speak? So it looks like we do have one person who will be testifying over the phone. Jeanette, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for public testimony on case 20210126. Are you testifying as an individual or representing a group?
Both.
All righty, you have five minutes to testify. Please state your main, name, and then you can begin.
Hi, thank you to the commission for considering this issue. My name is Jeanette Lee. I'm an 11-year resident of Anchorage. Oh, hello? Sorry.
We can, we can still hear you.
Hello, this is Jeanette. Jeanette, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for public testimony on case 20210126. Are you testifying as an individual or representing a group? Both. All righty, you have five minutes to testify. Please state your main, name, and then you can begin. Hi, thank you to the commission for considering this issue. My name is Jeanette Lee. I'm an 11-year resident of Anchorage. Oh, hello? Sorry.
We can, we can still hear you.
Hello, this is Jeanette.
Can you try, if you're watching this on television, can you try muting that?
Oh, sorry. Never actually done this before. Okay. Are you testifying as an individual or representing a group?
We, we can still hear the background. Are you going to mute it further?
Five minutes to testify. Please state your name, and then you can begin. Okay. My name is Jeanette Lee. I'm an 11-year resident of Anchorage and a housing researcher at Sightline Institute. Um, sorry, I'll start again. My name's Jeanette Lee. I'm an 11-year resident of Anchorage and a housing researcher at Sightline Institute, a public policy think tank. In both capacities, I'm testifying in support of certain provisions in AO 202189. They were all outlined in October 21st letter that's included in your meeting packet. Just two items to note, we're neutral or have little research information on provisions that are not mentioned in that letter. And also, I've made, I may have been responding to an earlier draft of the amendment, so the numbering in the letter may not exactly match the numbering in the latest draft. So the focus of my research is on how we can help move Anchorage closer to the goals outlined in its 2040 land use plan, specifically reinvestment, quote, "reinvestment in existing business districts and neighborhoods with new patterns of infill and redevelopment, and a more compact and efficient land use pattern in and around mixed-use centers while preserving lower-intensity uses elsewhere." I believe some of the proposed changes to Title 21, as written in this ordinance, will help Anchorage meet the goals set out in the plan. I, because they're contained in my letter, I'm not going to go through the list. So just to kind of wrap up here, I'll say these changes are good steps toward improving Anchorage's housing stock and alleviating upward price pressures through the construction of what's known as middle housing, which is defined as house-scale buildings with multiple units compatible in scale and form with detached, single-family homes and located in a walkable neighborhood. So, you know, these changes represent a modest step toward increasing housing choice in our community by removing obstacles and codes that can discourage construction of multifamily homes, accessory dwelling units, and other types of missing middle housing. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, looks like we don't have any questions. Thank you for calling in and taking the time to testify.
Thank you.
Okay, with no further testimony, we'll go ahead and close the public. Is, sorry, before we go ahead and do that, is there any rebuttal that the planning department would like to make in response to any of the commentary we heard?
Mr. Chair, I have no rebuttal.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and close the public testimony then. What's the will of the body here tonight?
Apologies.
Commissioner Strick?
Yeah, this is a question for staff. In regards to Section 13, providing an exception to the paving of a driveway which connects to a gravel street. I understand the rationale. I understand the purpose of this. My question, though, becomes, what happens when that street does become paved? Is there going to be a requirement, and is there a timeline by which then the homeowner then has to have their driveway paved?
So through the chair, that's a great question, and that thought had occurred to me as well when I was writing up my staff report. So there would not be any sort of timeline that the homeowner would be required, be required to pave the driveway once the street is paved, because their unpaved driveway would now be grandfathered in, and would be allowed to remain as such until such time as the regulations change, or the properties redeveloped, and they would require a paved driveway.
Are we defeating part of the purpose, then, of why the requirement on the pavement? It's a chicken-and-the-egg scenario here. And, you know, for, for the very reason that we paved the driveway so not to track gravel out, vice versa, now we've got the same problem now in reverse, and we may be creating incentive to have unpaved new subdivision built, or so forth. I just, I'm trying to clarify if we've got an unintended consequence that could occur here that could have long-term impact, because now we're creating grandfathered rights that go, what, into perpetuity? I don't know that that's, is that the intent here? Let's state it.
Through the chair, the intent is simply just to reduce the development costs. You know, because oftentimes, for a new home, as it's being built and it's connecting to a gravel street, you know, we are finding ourselves in the awkward situation of saying, "Well, you got to pave your driveway." And they say, "Well, it's connected to a gravel street. Why do I have to do that?" "Oh, it's so you don't track the gravel onto the roadway." "Well, the gravel, the street's made of gravel, so like, what's the point?" And then, there is the intention that all streets in the municipality at some point will all be paved for various reasons. Stormwater, air quality, minimizes dust, reduces, improves safety, things like that when you have less gravel on the roadway. So, but to say when that's going to happen is very difficult to predict.
Does this inadvertently incentivize developers now to develop small plots of land, subdivision properties, whether it be a 10, 12, 15, small subdivision, to do so with unpaved streets?
So through the chair, we're not affecting the paving requirements for streets in any way through this. As far as an incentive, I don't think it, it's an incentive for the subdivider. I think it's more of an incentive for the homeowner.
Well, I think we're, we're looking at, I mean, we've heard testimony from the Anchorage Home Builders. The whole premise of this is to decrease cost for building and construction. That goes to the heart of the construction cost, as well as the development cost of the subdivision and the lots themselves, which goes to the streets. So I'm, I'm just want to be cautious that we're not creating an unintended consequence here down the road, that we're now creating incentive to build, and, and I guess this would, this would have been a great question to ask for one of the members from the Anchorage Home Builders groups and the developers. And I would welcome any input, if, if that's allowed.
So, I don't know if staff has a suggestion for the process for asking that question to the public at this point?
Through the chair, so the chair, if they seek further guidance from somebody who previously testified, they, they may do so. Matters in, in your hands, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'm, I think it makes sense. If you have a question, Commissioner Strick, go ahead and ask that.
Sure. Thank you.
And can you say your name again for the record, please?
Yeah, through the chair, Eric Visser, Visser Construction, president for Anchorage Home Builders Association. I don't think this code, or this code does not regulate when subdivision street gets paved or not paved. This is directly related to a single-family home, and what, whether that home connects to a gravel road or a paved road. So this requirement doesn't, yeah, doesn't affect subdivision development.
No, I understand that. But the, the question I had is, at some point in time, that subdivision road gets paved, in which case now we have gravel going onto the pavement, which was the whole intention before, was to prevent that from occurring. That's why we have paved driveway requirements. So now that we've waylaid that, created a grandfathered right situation, let's take that in reverse as a developer. Wouldn't it incentivize you to decrease the price of your development of your lots, to put in unpaved streets anyway, if you can get away with it, depending on the style, type of houses, location? And now we've got unpaved driveways now as well. And that's one way to lower the cost. You're going to lower the cost of your subdivision lots by quite a bit if pavement's not required. I know that's not a requirement here, but it's, again, it's a trickle effect of the pavement to begin with. And backing up, the city did, the, the staff did explain the situation to me here earlier. It's, they are creating a grandfathered right situation to the homeowner, that the homeowner now, with an unpaved driveway, with now new pavement out in the street, is not required to go out there and pave their driveway, to, to, for significant savings.
Yep.
But we've created a new problem. Now, granted, over time, driveways will pack down. You're not going to have the same gravel issues and so forth. But I just want to make sure that we're not creating an unintended consequence as a result of this change here. I agree with the change, but I also agree that, you know, having unpaved parking spots, lots, and having unpaved areas in town is creating the dust situation, the gravel situation, and the traction that's going out into the streets.
Yeah.
Worse than any city I've been into in this country. It's right here.
So it might be helpful if staff could maybe just provide an overview of what the paving requirements would look like for new developments and subdivisions, if you have that available?
Mr. Chair, I, let me, you're catching me a little bit off-guard here, but generally, when a subdivision goes in, depending upon if it's Class A, Class B district, that dictates, you know, number of lots, that's going to dictate what type of road improvements are necessary to, to be constructed. Gravel roadways are not allowed per code unless a variance is approved. We have had a few subdivisions that have gotten variances in recent years to not pave in, through the use of rap or, or crushed rock in some cases. But generally speaking, all new subdivisions, with very few exceptions, if a variance is granted, are required to pave all of this interior streets and access streets.
So by definition, a subdivision with rap, compacted, will be still considered gravel, not paved?
Through the chair, I can't answer that with any certainty, to be honest with you.
Well, we can take note of that, and we can bring it up if, if this proceeds as dictated in the beginning, and it's postponed, we can address that at that point then. Thank you.
Commissioner Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Commissioner Strick, that's a great segue to where I wanted to take this. Feel like we're in a bit of a gray period without a positive motion on the floor. Been given a recommendation from staff to go ahead and postpone to a time certain. Looks like case 2021-0126, I move that we postpone to December 6, 2021, to allow Plating Board to hear this case at their December 1 meeting. That is my motion, and I can add color to it if needed thereafter.
Okay, looks like that motion has been seconded by Commissioner Strick. Go ahead, Commissioner Ron, if there was further commentary you'd like to make to your motion?
Just noting for the record... Just noting for the record, as we've heard fellow commissioners, we do have an opportunity before us, or will at this December 6th meeting, to potentially reopen a public hearing. I would like to thank all those folks from the public who did testify this, this evening, coming down tonight, and appreciate your understanding that we're not acting on the matter tonight, but postponing until the 6th of December.
Okay, that motion passes, and the case will be postponed. And it looks like there's no further items on the agenda. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Commissioner Polis, seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Seeing no objection, that motion passes.